Jenme, here. Dr. Dave, here. Jen Harris. Brennan Rowland. River Jeanette. Rexy Garrett. Diane Solder.
Here.
Best of the lot.
Yes. Best of the lot.
Okay, I'll stand for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on our agenda is the Brandon High School student report.
Let's take that. Is it right there? Yes. All right. Great.
Hi. So this past week, our winter sports all started up. So on Friday, our boys and girls opened their league play against Ohio. Our girls won, but unfortunately, our boys did not. Our varsity wrestling team also opened the season by hosting their first meet, and it was a quad, so two or three other teams were there. And then over the weekend, our boys and girls bowling hosted the Baker Tournament at Cherry Hill, which they do every year, every week, so. Other high school events, our charity week was last week, and our charity that we were going for is the Alliance for the Great Lakes. And every year, the NAFCMAHS, which is like the statewide student council, chooses a charity of the year, so that was that for this year, and we raised over $3,600. They haven't finished counting yet, but that's what they're gonna finish up doing before we go to break. As you can see, Mr. Wyatt on cafeteria wall, that was one of our events this year, so students would donate money to get a piece of duct tape, and then they could put on Mr. Wyatt. It was pretty successful. He didn't stay up, though, when we pulled the chair, but I don't know. Our Christmas spirit week started this week with high participation. Today was red and green day, and then tomorrow's Christmas socks. And then our holiday choir and band concerts were also this past week. Our service project for this year just got wrapped up. It was called Mid in November. So what our committee did was drop off boxes at each school, and then people would donate used coats and gloves and stars just to donate to the Orangeville Community Closet to help keep people warm. And then each seminar in the high school also need a tie blanket, and then this Friday, our committee is going to the Children's Hospital of Michigan in Troy to donate those. And then we're also going to be, we're hosting a regional event this year at Frank Mu, it's January 15th, and then our service committee is also gonna be sharing their service project and presenting it in hopes to go to the states, so. Yep, that's where I got.
Next time you go to the [inaudible] consider Wyatt to the wall, but you know what you're doing.
Okay. I tried to do these too, but I don't think he went for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have public comments and questions on agenda business. Any comments? Yep?
Anyone?
Okay. Okay, next, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, next, information and discussion items. Any board of education committee report? Or have we had any? Okay, finance report, Janme.
You're gonna do the bond first or my presentation?
We do the bond.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So on the bond, in the work session, we're gonna talk about requests regarding our bond application. It was approved, I believe, last month, and I wanna look at one project. We had some initial conversations with parents. The parent feedback was pretty strong about one item that was on that, and the suggestion from some of those parents was that we should revisit and talk about that. So specifically, it was about the rooms that were going to be added on at Oakwood. There was two rooms that were there. And so bringing it back to the board, let me just talk about what the options are in this. So there are 18 classrooms at Oakwood right now. We are converting the computer lab into a 19th classroom. There's really no need for computer labs in this century. They have one technology in their classrooms, just not used. So we have 19 classrooms. Our challenge was that our special education classrooms have been using these smaller production room and another room in the office, which are really not suitable for special education. So that was what led to those rooms being considered to be added on. So here are some options. For the 2021 school year, if I completed initial staffing for next year, and we would need 18 classrooms next year, and we could convert that computer lab into the special ed room. In the 2122 school year, 18 again, and we could use that classroom. In the 2223 school year, we may need 19 classrooms. And that's what this building was for. If we had 19 classrooms and we used that other room for special education, we might need more space, and that's what led to those rooms being built. But I'm gonna just throw out two other options we may consider other than building those two rooms. One, that's an option that was raised by some parents, is if we're short on rooms at Oakwood, since there's so much room at Harvey Swanson, would you consider having all junior kindergarten in the future be at Harvey Swanson? So instead of having a junior kindergarten at Oakwood and two over at Harvey Swanson, let's put them together, let's have all, there'll be all preschool at Harvey Swanson. Always, that was some parent feedback on that. Option two is there are, there's another room at Oakwood. I spent some time walking the building with Troy Stewart, and there is a work room that's actually a fairly large room. It's got a large table that's in the middle of it for working, and we would recommend taking that out. If we took that out, it could be a functional room for special education. We can split it into two rooms. We think that that could work really well. I'll refer to Stewart on that. So tonight, I'd like to recommend that we consider vacating, or the board consider vacating that additional rooms to that building, and that we use the internal ways of addressing that problem there, and reallocate those resources towards some of those projects, like parking lots, roofs, some of those other ones that are already in current project.
On the first alternative you described.
Yes.
How would that work if a family had? Well, I guess they could just move the children. My question is, different children all in one family, all of elementary age, having some at JK, at Harvey Swanson, and then some that they want to retain within their, you know, home school, if you will, of Oakwood, and how would they accommodate getting everybody where they could be? And my second question, just so you can listen to me more, my second question on the second alternative is what is that room made use for now? The big room with the table? What are we losing?
On the first one, the idea is that junior kindergarten would be more looked at as more part of our preschool program, a transition to the K-12 education. We have that program a few years, it's young fives. We have all preschool that's already at Harvey Swanson, so the idea would be that preschool would go, it would be, include the junior kindergarten, would all be part of the early childhood setting. So that's number one. The second one, that room is a work room, and that's for different projects and cutting paper and different things like that, and that could be moved to another location. That might be better in those smaller rooms that's not ideal for special education. So that's, the thought was the options that we're looking at.
And if I could just make sure I understand this, all preschools are at Harvey Swanson right now, correct? Not in Oakland?
Correct.
So if they're already there established, to go into the JK, they would just be staying in the same building, so really is no disruption from preschool into JK. It would just be those that were new families, they just have a JK, and the first grader, they would be in two separate buildings. It would be maybe only a little room.
Okay. Those are the two options that would, we really don't need more than that, so that's our, that would be our recommendation based on that initial parent feedback.
And I have to tell you, based on some of the parent feedback that I have heard too, I think if we can make use of that space as is, it'll be a better win-win for things, I think, in the long run, and then think about whether, if the growth happens, we can make decisions as that comes, as we're faced with it.
As an Oakwood parent, I mean, and making a parent of a kid that is in the special education program and is gonna be split class and all that stuff, the combined classes, so I've been in the work room, and I mean, it could totally be allocated towards the room that the special ed is in right now, which is the old ETA room, actually, and I don't see there being, as long as it's, the work room has, you know, the ability to, that we're not just throwing everything in there and now you're just gonna have to vent. It is used by parents, teachers, staff, it isn't, I mean, they're not all in there at once, there's usually been a couple people in there, but it's used every day, all day long, so as long as we make sure that if we move that work room over to that other smaller area, it's organized and properly utilized, and it's not just moving furniture and saying, well, this is what's in here now, make it work.
Make it functional.
It needs to be properly functional, and I don't know.
And you need that area.
Do we allocate just a tiny bit of money, or if we can do that with, you know, the general fund or something, but when that move happens, I would like to see that it's done properly, and but.
But it sounds like you need that area to work also, maybe not that big, but.
Yeah, and actually, that work room is a great room, I think, for special ed, because it's across from the teacher's lounge, it's pretty quiet back there, it's down the little hallways, you're not having a ton of people walking by.
Yeah.
It's got windows, it's got a little exit, so you can get outdoors really quick, if you need to walk outside for some fresh air or something, so I actually, and I don't mind JK being at Harvey. As an Oakwood parent, I'd head, 'cause in JK, I mean, it's still, it's not kindergarten yet, it could go with the preschool.
So the options are still.
So we have to do something formal to amend out or transition?
I have an action item on here. I put a placeholder, I said move it to Brandon, depending on what the board wants to do. So I'd like it to be a formal board action, then we can notify the treasurer that we're gonna vacate that project and reallocate towards other projects.
All right. It's a full frame motion for it.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
And Jan, you can go on up there, but before we start, we're also adding an app, action item, that we're going to do the adjustments to Dr. Outlaw's contract, and then we are not going to vote on the B action item, which is approval of the Brandon Board book. We're taping that to January of 2020.
Evening. Well, Matt asked me to present tonight, as you all know, I was asked to take charge of starting a community education program, and one of the things that I had looked into and we decided would be a good idea was a after-school tutoring program, and modeled after like a Sylvan-type learning. That was, that was the idea that started it last October at Oakwood, November at Harvey, and after the first full year, I asked Dave recently to look at our NWA, NWA results, and we have some really good news, so Matt thought it would be beneficial for you to learn about the program and the good results, so I'm gonna walk you through the first six slides, and then Dave will come up and talk about the student results. And the name Hybrid After-School Tutoring Program, I did that because I thought, well, it's a virtual-type program, but we have teachers in the classroom, so I kind of called our hybrid program. It was established fall 2018, like I said. The program runs at Oakwood and Harvey twice per week, Mondays and Wednesdays this year. Our Brandon teachers run the classes, and the model is a differentiated instruction using various software programs. Currently, we're using, our teachers are using RASKids, Movimax, Khan Academy, and iXL. The average ratio is 10 to 1. This year, it's a little bit less this fall. The students are grouped by ages. The class time is split between math and reading, so typically, they, right after school, they go, they meet, they have a snack, and then they have a full hour with the program, so good 30 minutes would be the goal for each program, math and reading. Placement tests are used for the math starting point, and then the reading starting point is based on district testing. So the teachers have the data, they prepare, they know who their students are, and they're ready for the students and to get things going. The teachers are responsible for monitoring student progress. We do pay them one hour a week for planning for this particular program. They're, like I was saying, the hybrid program, it's an independent learning model combined with teacher assistance as needed. The students need to be proficient before the program allows them to move to the next level, so there's that repetition, which is really useful. There is access provided for home use. I'm not sure, I'd like to find out how many of our kids are actually taking this and working at home maybe a bit, and then the teachers are responsible to provide parent Staff and students, we have had nine Brandon teachers involved in the program. Six of the nine have taught every session, including a summer session. We've had a total of 111 students participating to date, starting from last fall, that's including our summer program. Harvey Swanson, 54 students, Oakwood, 57, so plenty of kind of evenly split. The program cost is $5 a class, no drop-in, so they do need to register for the whole either fall or our winter session, and then we also do have EGYA financial assistance This year, we started, well, in the summer, we did run a middle school math camp, and we carried that over, we have two middle school teachers. So the middle school, it's a little bit different. It's math only, like I said, two teachers, we started in the summer. We've had 14 students participating to date, so a little slower at the middle school, but we do that with a flexible schedule to accommodate student needs, so they pay a set price, and then they can drop in two days a week, three days a week, or whatever it may be. So we're hoping to grow the math program there, and it is available to all BMES students, grades six through eight. Whoops, okay, that's my part of it, and Dave's going to discuss the really good news.
Absolutely. And this slide was made before the comments were made about exclamation point, so I apologize. First of all, this, the calculation that we're using for this is something called CGP, and it's a fancy term, and essence CGP, conditional growth percentile, allows us to compare apples to apples, it allows us to compare kids at various levels. Throughout the years, we've talked about percent of kids' professions or students showing growth. The expectation is that kids naturally show growth just from being alive. Everybody's going to grow at some point. So when you use CGP, it allows us to say, how much did a kid grow compared to other kids that had the same starting point? So let's say that I'm a second grade student, and last year I was in the 10th percentile, so 90% of the kids scored better than me, right? I'm in the 10th percentile last year. I'm being compared against all of the kids that are also in the 10th percentile that started in the exact same place. A CGP of a 50 means, if there's 100 other kids I'm being compared to, 50 of them outperformed me, 50 of them fell below me, so I'm right at the average. So a CGP of 50 means you're average. So if you just remember, a CGP of 50 is average. Really, really phenomenal news. When we look at these charts, we see some amazing things happen. First thing that we notice, on the far right, we looked at all students, so all students, whether they're in tutoring or not, and here in the Brandon School District, all of our students, we take their average, and both reading and math have a CGP of better than 50. As a matter of fact, all of our students, their average is 53.67, so Brandon students are growing faster than the average student, which is amazing. 53.67 is better than 50. When we look at all of our tutoring students, our CGP is 58.60, so our tutoring students are growing faster than all of our other students, which tells us it's working. We look at the graphics starting at the left, we see an even better story, especially when we look at reading. Reading's in blue. What I did, if I took the students and said, how long were they in the program? And do we see the CGP increasing at a length of time of in the program? And we see a very telling story, especially when we look at the blue, like I said. Students that were in the program for 0 to 19 sessions had a CGP of 55.71, so again, outperforming our average. 20 to 29 was 57. 40 to 65 had a CGP of 66.95, which is out of this world when you're talking just straight growth compared to the rest of our, the rest of our students. It's definitely working. When we sit, when we look at math, the story is very similar. When we look at Brad, our overall CGP was better than our CGP in reading. So even in math, our students are continuing to grow. Slightly different story, when we talk about the number of sessions and whether or not there's that continued growth, and that's something that we're digging into. I'll talk about that a little bit on this next slide. Because one of the things we're trying to drill into is what is it about this that's actually making it work? Because we are firm believers, it's not just kids sitting in front of computers. We know that that hybrid model is what's making a difference for our kids. It's the fact that we have teachers in the room with these students, and that they're online doing some of the programs. So we're trying to figure out what is that secret sauce? Because if it's something that's working after school, or 75 minutes, why can't we take that and leverage it into the classrooms to see similar results? We're trying to drill in. And one of the things that we're comparing it to is a program that Oakwood currently has in, for one of their literacy interventions, it's called the RISE program. So we tried to disaggregate to try to figure out if we're seeing greater success with students that were in tutoring and in RISE, or just with RISE, or just with tutoring, where's the best return on our investment? So what we see, again, all students far left, we can see their growth, this is reading, we can see the overall CGP for all students. The blue represents all students that were in tutoring, so again, you can see that it's higher. All students that were in the RISE program at Oakwood. RISE plus tutoring, you can see it's like that secret sauce, where you can really see a big bankier box. As a matter of fact, RISE plus tutoring, just to give you that CGP, 85.62. The best you can get is 99, which means that a kid outperformed 99% of his peers that started at the same place. Students that are in RISE and tutoring have a CGP of 85.62. So 85% of the kids that started in the same place as them a year ago have now been left behind by students that are in this program. So what we're doing now is trying to figure out, how does this work? How do those two things work hand in hand? And we know a lot of it is the communication that's taking place, the data reporting, differentiated instructions, teachers actually be able to drill in and have targeted conversations with kids to move them forward. We were able to see a lot of the strategies that are used in the RISE program are very similar to the conversations that are being had with students in the tutoring program. So this is again, something that we're now trying to leverage and say, let's just not have this at after-school tutoring, let's have in-school intervention hours like this, and can we carry this over to Harvey Swanson as well, and over to the middle school as well? So it's not just an after-school program, but we can really maximize and get every student reaching the levels that we're saving that warrants. So overall, is it working? Yes, 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 exclamation point, exclamation point, exclamation point. Questions?
RISE is just through third grade.
RISE is just through third grade. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
RISE is just through third grade, if that didn't include.
So I asked, I asked that they would present this information, because it's a snapshot of the type of interventions that are happening, but community ed, it's something that the district added just a couple years ago, and Jan's been really creative with programs, trying to bring in all these different opportunities for students to get involved, and this is one, these are some of the best results that we have seen of any interventions that we've done, so we're really using this to have some very important conversations regarding principles on it. We've met the leadership team quite a few times, and really trying to drill in what we can take from this, what can we learn outside of just this program. So, you know, a lot of great work, great work done by Jan and team, and Dave, thanks for putting all the data together on this, so.
I mean, great, great work. I like, I think in the middle school, it's going to pick up, those from Oakwood and Harvey are working their way there. I just love seeing that, you know, that we're getting these kids and tutoring them and things approved.
It's really great, because the teachers have really bought into it. Some of our stronger teachers that we know are doing this, which is probably a lot of reasons for it's successful as well, but they really have bought into it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other finance report?
Education.
Just, I was gonna mention about the welding program. We are on track with the welding program. I know I've mentioned it, we've got two courses to approve tonight, welding, welding and machining one, welding and machining two. Again, this is part of the Marshall grant. We are on track, we have posted our position for the fall, we'll probably be part-time, we'll probably have a retiree, a teacher in the field to teach that course, but we're ready to go. I've talked with the number of students, the students are very excited. Seniors are very disappointed that it's coming in the fall, and, but anyway, just wanna let you know that we're moving, and it's gonna be on the course selections, pending the vote tonight. And we wanted to see if anybody had any questions or anything on it.
Cause the lines were all about ready to roll.
Ready to go, yeah.
I heard they're fired up.
Good idea.
Yeah, no, we have, we actually have some really good equipment here in Brandon, and it was a really good spot for us to do welding.
Are we just opening up?
We have some really good machine equipment that has been used in the past. The welding stuff has been there, but we have not done welding in many years here. Some of it has to do with just the focus of education. The last 15 years, we really went away from trades for quite a while, and I think we gotta capitalize on.
I'm just trying to get my head around it, but do something that's fantastic.
I know, we already have what we think.
You already have it.
Yeah, yeah. A little disoriented.
No, honestly, our part of the grant is going, not gonna be for equipment, it's going to be for staffing, which is a really huge advantage, so it's really, I'm excited about it.
Not that this is necessarily about just the welding, but just these trades programs coming back in, and the, I don't know, maybe it was, 'cause I had a choir concert last time, I don't know if we talked about the woodworking, they brought the little kids in there, and obviously, the little kids come into the welding too. One of the kindergartners whose parent is a friend of mine, told her mom after going to the woodshop that day, she said, "That was the best day of my entire life." And so like, just here, but I'm hoping that with the welding too, those young kids, 'cause you know, my girls would be like, with welding, you know, where if we can start them out young and introduce them in there and open their little eyes, and I'd love to see that slow, so.
What's neat with the woodworking that's happening this year, and everyone's great, the classes are packed, are, there are kids that are interested in going into the trades, but there are other kids that have no interest in going into the trades that are just really interested in doing the woodwork. And there's kids that are in, you know, staff and doing all this other stuff, and they're intended to be an engineer, and they're learning how to do some basic woodwork, and it's like awesome, they're loving it. And it's boys, it's girls, it's kids that are struggling in schools, kids that are honors kids, it's going really well, so thanks for the support.
But the worst thing you can do is get an engineer that doesn't know how you do a screwdriver. Trust me, they're all.
Exactly, having that tactile experience and not all the brain is very fun.
Very good.
Just wanna give you a heads up.
Very good, okay, our action item. District Y Professional Development Committee, could I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education recognize the Brandon Curriculum Council's District Professional Development Advisory Panel and.
Report.
Okay, discussion then.
So there were some changes to the state laws that relates to professional development. This is already a committee that's gonna be our advisory panel, but I wanted to have formal board action to appoint this group, because we're.
District-wide professional development committee, could I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education recognize the Brandon, Brandon curriculum principles of the district's official professional development advisory panel and support.
Okay, discussion then.
So there were some changes to the state laws that relates to professional development. This is already a committee that's gonna be our advisory panel, but I want to have formal board action to appoint this group, because we're required to have an official professional development advisory panel. So I want the board to make it official that the group that's already advising us is the district's official committee. That's, that's the, that's what we're doing here. Is that okay? Is there any questions on that?
Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, we're skipping B and table it until next month. Okay, could I get approval of our welding and machining courses for 2021?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the addition of welding and machining one and two to begin in the fall of 2020 as presented in this text.
Support.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no. Could I get a motion for the approval of AP Computer Science?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the addition of the AP Computer Science for the fall of 2020 as presented. Support.
Okay, any discussion?
Any questions on this?
No, great.
I hear a point of applause, I'm happy, people are excited.
Good, excellent.
Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion for the modification of the bond application?
Remove the Brandon Board of Education modify the March 2021 application discussed regarding not adding classrooms that Oakwood won't enter.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, could I get a motion for the contract for Dr. Outlaw?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the adjustments to Dr. Outlaw's contract as presented.
Support.
Okay, and just following suit with our other bargaining, we're precedence in teacher unions, other unions that were giving a uniform two percent raise and going with the standard of the administrator contract for the longevity. So we thank you. And last but not least, increasing your contract another year, we always keep it a three-year contract, that's the protocol, pretty much, too. So we're hoping to keep you that long, so, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed say no. Motion passes. And now I have citizens input. None? Okay, I say move, we need a jury. Yeah?